Welcome to this forum introducing the candidates competing for the Ward one position of the Corvallis City Council. This online program is co-hosted by the Lynn Benton Branch of the NAACP and the League of Women Voters of Corvallis. My name is Greg Cooper and I reside in Corvallis. I serve as the Chair of the Political Action Committee of the Lynn Benton NAACP. Our organization has been active in the community since nineteen seventy-one. Our members are of diverse racial and ethnic origins, working as advocates united in the fight to end racial inequality for all Americans. A nonpartisan organization, we are proud to co-sponsor this event to better inform Corvallis voters of the key issues of the twenty twenty-four city council races. We convey our thanks to the candidates participating tonight and to all candidates on the twenty twenty-four ballot who serve the values and ideals of American democracy. Today Jessica McDonald joins me as co-moderator and organizer of this event. Jessica, please tell us about the League of Women Voters of Corvallis.
Thank you Greg. My name is Jessica McDonald and I serve as the Voter Education Chair of the League of Women Voters of Corvallis. The League of Women Voters of Corvallis is a nonpartisan advocacy and education organization working to defend our democracy and engage our community in the issues that matter most to them. I encourage those listening to get involved with the League and the NAACP, both of which I am members of, and get involved and get active in our community. Welcome to Jan Napack and Beckett Hunt to this candidate forum. To open this discussion, we are going to ask each of you to take two minutes to introduce yourself. And you know, tell everybody watching this recording why you were running for city council. We will be starting with Jan and then moving to Beckett. So Jan, your two minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Jan Napack. I've been living in or near Corvallis, Lewisburg actually, for since nineteen seventy-four. So I've seen a lot of changes. I think that the city is going in the right direction right now. I would like to continue working with many things that are in progress right at this time. Many of the initiatives that we have going on at the moment, say for instance, the HOPE Board, HOPE, that would be Housing Opportunity Planning and Equity Board for Houseless and Homeless. That's a in in conjunction with the county. Lots of things going on there. I've got Navigation Center hopefully happening soon. The city is very intent on housing goals, creating those opportunities for affordable housing. And this is, these are, these are some of the things that we have been working on for the last, I don't know, four, at least three or four years, that's changing the code and and making sure that the housing is streamlined, housing development and permitting systems are streamlined. Gone through a lot of the climate change, equitable climate, equitable, equitable community issues. So a lot of water under the bridge going forward. There's a lot to do, a lot more to do. And having the background and the institutional knowledge that I have, I, I feel very possessive, if you will, of of going forward and making sure that that these things come to fruition.
Thank you, Jan. And same introductory question to you, Beckett.
Hi, so my name is Beckett Hunt. My pronouns are he/him. I'm running for Ward one, City Council in Corvallis. I've lived here for just over three years now. I am a renter and a blue collar worker at the university. And I decided to run for city council in, in the simplest terms because I live here and the people I love live here. And in my belief, I love all members of my community. And for many years now, I have been looking for an opportunity to get more involved in local government and to see some more direct action to to get my hands dirty, so to speak. Some of my core priorities are housing justice, like Jan has mentioned. Corporators of mine are developing more AMI restricted, income restricted housing developments to ensure that the housing needs of our community are met within the next five to twenty years as we continue to expand, as well as workers' rights, tenants' rights, and maintaining and increasing the accountability of local government and increasing the amount that our constituents have a voice within our local government. And I believe that I can provide some essential representation to core groups of our city such as renters, blue collar workers, and young people that have previously been less represented than I would like within local government.
Thank you, candidates. And now I'll pass it over to Greg. And Greg, just to unmute.
Once again, well, sorry about that. And thanks very much, Jan and Beckett, for your introductory comments. We're now going to ask seven questions of the Ward one candidates. These questions have been provided in advance to the candidates and we will set a time limit of two minutes for responses. Jessica and I will rotate asking questions and we'll also rotate which candidate goes first for each question. To begin, we will ask for Beckett's response first and then we will hear from Jan. So this is our first question for tonight. What do you see as the biggest issues facing the city in the next five years? How do you propose to tackle those issues? We'll start with Beckett.
So the two major issues that I see the city facing within both the immediate and late future that I see personally and have heard from my constituents are climate crisis and housing supply, which are deeply intertwined. In terms of climate crisis, some essential actions that I would like to see taken by the city within the next twenty years are designating a climate-friendly area. That's something that's been required by the, by the state of Oregon to designate a certain section of our city as a climate-friendly area, which includes restrict, certain distinctions on zoning laws such as mixed-use housing, which is something that we as a city already have and frankly incredible amount of, as well as pushing towards a multimodal approach for transportation rather than focusing most on vehicular-based infrastructure such as expanding our bus system, increasing the the number of lines, the reach, the frequency of bus routes, as well as providing more protections and safer routes to bike commuters, to walkers, to everyone navigating our city not in a personal vehicle, as well as waste management. Within our term, the franchise agreement with Republic Services in reference to our city's waste management is coming due, which I believe is an essential part of climate action in our city, as well as disaster preparedness. In my opinion, climate crisis is here. We have to treat it as something that it's not when disasters will strike. It is not if disasters will strike, it's when they will. So we need to be prepared and have and have strong, dedicated and widely available plans for climate disaster resilience. In terms of housing supply, which again is deeply intertwined with climate crisis, I would like to see in the future more more mixed-use zoning such as the CFA zone, more AMI income restricted developments, emphasis on infill development and potentially even a full tenants' bill of rights in the whole infrastructure.
Thank you very much, Beckett. We'll next hear from Jan.
Okay, I have three. The first one is revitalization and economic support of our business community. And the reasons for that, especially downtown, we need to encourage business retention and expansion. That means jobs. That means we have a broader tax base. That means revenue. There's ways of doing this and I think that our, our city Economic Development Director Christopher Jacobs is on top of that. And so he's developed several strategies that were presented to the council. I think it was a couple of months ago, creating enterprise zones, opportunity zones, tax increment financing districts and so on. So we need to support that effort. The next one I have is the cities, the city has done great on its municipal climate success, success, successes, I guess, and met many of, or is meeting or will meet its its goals. So what I'd like to see, what we don't have is we have, we don't have a grassroots, we have the Corvallis Sustainability Coalition, which is a grassroots organization that's very, very involved in climate action and sustainability. I think we need to better team with them for for a number of reasons. First of all, we have an outdated climate action plan written in twenty seventeen. Almost daily, I read about new innovations and improvements in clean energy generation. And the state has several systematic approaches to processing and helping communities with with climate action. So we, we can offload some of the things that the Climate Action Board is doing now. If we coordinate with the state, we leverage the state, we leverage the feds, we leverage OSU, we leverage Sustainability Coalition, and rather than being plodding, we should, I think we need a new path, a more efficient path. Next one, houses. One sentence, housing and homelessness. We've just, the city of Corvallis has just now or recently added four hundred units of affordable housing to our city limits. They're not completed yet. They're in the process thereof.
And Beckett, thank you for those thoughtful remarks. Jessica, you have our next question.
Thank you. And for this question, we will start with Jan and then move to Beckett. Again, two minutes. How will you work to ensure that meaningful engagement and input from the public is represented in your deliberations and in your decisions as a city councillor? And we'll start with Jan.
Okay. Well, I've been at this a while. My intent is to use my role as councillor to build community trust and healthy relationships. I employ several ways to do this, including periodic newsletters and I explain current topics to them and the ramifications thereof. I provide links and opportunities for how they can participate in and be involved with the city. I also take pride in meeting and in reading and answering as many letters from my constituents as humanly possible. Not only letters sent to me, but those sent to the council in general. One of the more effective means that I have to engage with the community is through neighborhood associations. We have four of them in Ward one. I give you an example, West Hills Neighborhood Association is an exemplary example of communication with government. They have reached out to the city, county, ODOT. They now have a corridor planned for West Hills Road that took two years to put together, but they did it. They did it. I do my utmost to engage personally with my constituents. This way I expand my views, my network. I want to find mutual solutions, compromise and consensus. I'm not a political animal. After five and a half years on council, I found that such an approach is opposed to thinking my personal views are paramount. I, I think that's how local, nonpartisan government is best conducted.
Thank you, Jan. And the question to you, Beckett.
So as councillor, I plan to take full advantage of the avenues of community involvement that currently exist such as councillor corners and neighborhood association meetings, as well as I plan to release a bi-weekly newsletter and hold office hours in addition to the councillor comment corners where my constituents are able to come and speak with me about the issues that matter to them most. I also intend to prioritize that advisory, the community advisory boards are well-staffed and respected and that their decisions hold weight and have an impact on council decisions. My role as councillor, I believe, is to act as a conduit between the community and city staff. And it's not my interests and goals that are essential for me to represent, but those are my constituents.
Thank you, candidates. I'll pass it back to Greg.
You. For our next question, we'd like to ask about the urban growth boundary. Now, the city has a large urban growth boundary. What are your plans to service this land for the future, including infrastructure like sewer, water and transportation? And do you support a new memorandum of understanding with the county in relation to the use and development within the urban growth boundary? We're going to start with Beckett for this question.
I personally would support such memorandum. I am in support of all continued collaboration, communication between the city and the county, especially in terms of urban development. I believe that an essential part of encouraging urban, encouraging development along the urban growth boundary is property tax exemptions such as those represented in the South Corvallis Urban Renewal Plan, which provide a lot of incentive to developers to build within the boundary. However, I believe in this conversation of urban development that the emphasis is placed more so on encouraging development rather than making, rather than maintaining that the development happening is ecologically sound and necessary for the city. I believe there should be continued emphasis placed on things like soil grading permits and riparian era protections as well as continued surveying of sites rather than just the initial surveying for permit, for permit granting to ensure that guidelines are being followed consistently and that our natural areas are being properly protected and maintained inside our urban growth boundary.
Thank you, Beckett. Jan, your comments.
My comments, yes. I have to say that I, I did read the MOU probably three years ago and I thought it was lacking. So here, the issue of building in the fringe of our city limits, which is in the county, but in the urban growth boundary, has been mitigated to some extent by HB twenty-five eighty-seven, which was the annexation mandate back in twenty nineteen that said, you know, cities don't need to go with a, go to a public vote for annexations. Can this alone prevent sprawl beyond the urban growth boundary? So what, what's going to happen? People build outside the urban growth boundary. They're in the county. That's the fringe. We need to, we need to look at that seriously. Right now, if you look at Southwest Corvallis, you'll see that there's a lot of places that were built to county standards and county infrastructure standards back in the fifty's, sixty's, seventy's that now have no curbs, no sidewalks, no pavement, no streetlights. And they're, they're like right over here. What happened was people built in the county. And then they had to annex, the city had to annex back in the eighties because all their septic systems were failing. So if what we need to do is continue to generate specific area plans. We have an old plan from nineteen ninety-six for, for West Corvallis, which doesn't even show anything below Philomath Boulevard, south of Philomath Boulevard. We have one on this, ready to go or initiated in, in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six for the southwest area plan and specific area plan. We need, we need to get there. That's where people get involved and they look at what they want. In, you know, this is where they live now. What's their, what is, this is their sense of place. We need to get these people involved.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you, Beckett. Jessica, you have our next question.
Thank you. So the next question, and we'll start with Jan and then move to Beckett. Are there specific actions you would take if elected or re-elected to advance racial equity within our community? If so, what are those? And we'll start with Jan.
Well, I think, I think what, yes. What I would do is I would, I would listen and apply suggestions offered by the Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Board, JDI. Their charter is to provide policy advice to the city council on a wide array of topics related to social justice and equity, racial equity, diversity and so on. Their board is stellar, has a stellar membership, including people with lots of experience and in bias response and environmental justice, disability rights and so on and so forth. They're, they're poised to to make a huge difference. So aside from exacting particular advice from the JDI, I think where the rubber meets the road is in hiring, electing, appointing minority individuals to leadership positions and supporting organizations that represent a wide spectrum of culture and backgrounds. An example would be Casa Latinos Unidos, Unites, that's over at Garfield or near Garfield. But we also need to elevate and honor our champions of racial equity. For example, completing the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Park off of Walnut. That will become a physical representation of its namesake through inspirational art and design and pedestrian plazas and improved amenities. One of the goals of this park is to foster a beloved community by creating welcoming place for all people that will ignite possible social change, positive social change, not possible, positive social change.
Thank you, Jan. And the same question on advancing racial equity to you, Beckett.
So in terms of specific actions I would take if I am elected, I personally would like to establish either a task force or a dedicated staff position within the city to support people all over the city in filing discrimination cases to the Bureau of Labor, to the Bureau of Labor and Industry, as well as hiring a new DEI Department of, of Department of Inclusivity Manager to communicate both directly with the JDI board that Jan mentioned earlier and with all members of staff, ideally establishing an entire regularly meeting DEI task force made up of city staff that can work in addition to the volunteer-based JDI board to review and process bias reports and support people throughout the entire process.
Thank you, candidates. Now I'll turn to Greg for our next question.
Council events have called attention to the relationship between the city council and the city manager and staff. Is this relationship between the council and the city staff and management in need of change? We'll start with Beckett.
This is something that I have heard from many constituents and members of staff that I have spoken to that they believe the relationship between staff and council needs change. And I agree, I believe specifically that city councillors in that our current structure that where they are only allowed to communicate specifically with the heads of department is inefficient and it places an undue amount of stress and labor on the heads of department and on our city manager. And the department head should obviously be in the loop on all communications. But however, it restricts the efficiency of councillors immensely. And I believe leads to a lack of accountability, both the council being accountable to the city manager and vice versa, which as I stated, one of my core priorities is is accountability and transparency within local government. So I would love to see the relationship between council and staff and the city as a whole be improved, more efficient and more open.
Thank you, Beckett. Jan, your response.
Okay, well, this, this is a complex issue that certainly could use more light on the subject and understanding of how the city charter drives city government. Prior to reorganization of council portfolios, I think it was twenty nineteen, there were twenty-seven or twenty-eight committees having sometimes overlapping, sometimes inefficient, oftentimes self-perpetuating hybrid polit, hybrid policy operational hybrid policy operations objectives. So I don't wonder that simplifying that structure is where the disconnect between some councillors and management begin to manifest. So we have a council manager form of government where the city council appoints a city manager to oversee the day-to-day operations of the city. The council is responsible for setting policy while the manager is responsible for carrying it out. So the city manager can participate in the policymaking process by making recommendations. This approach puts a premium on administrative competence and efficiency. Efficiency is the operative word. Unlike large cities where council members earn six-figure amounts for monitoring the operations and performance of city agencies, our council reach, our council reach is now limited to being a liaison to a particular portfolio, for instance, Corvallis Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, HOPE, JDI, with, with the emphasis on nesting political leadership with community collaboration. The, I realize that policy setting is a fine art that doesn't come naturally, at least not to me. Much, it's so much easier to barrel forward and just command what needs doing. So instead of council, instead the council must excel or find ways to excel at setting policy, to collaborate, to find equitable compromise and keep the long view in mind and not tell what, tell the staff what to do. Thank you.
Thank you both for sharing your insights and opinions on that question. Jessica, our next question.
Yes. So with this question, we will start with Jan and then move to Beckett. The city is in the process of planning and designs for a potential new civic campus on Madison Avenue. What are your thoughts on the civic campus to replace the existing city hall? Would you support its development at this point in time?
Okay, so you may know that I'm a member of the Civic Campus Engagement Outreach Task Force. And, and the reason I'm on there is because I have no doubts that we need to modernize our civic facilities. There's no getting past the problem that we're facing, we're facing with occupying city buildings. Some of them are the oldest in the city. City Hall was built in eighteen ninety-two. The Annex was built in nineteen hundred. Madison Avenue Complex was built in nineteen fifty-six. And the law enforcement building in nineteen seventy-two, municipal court in nineteen seventy-two. So you know, these are all two-by-six construction. In fact, two of the main parks and rec facility, office buildings and the maintenance yard were built before World War Two or just after. And they've been through a couple of floods each. So if you look at, you know, we've gone through updates and retrofits, but the energy footprint, the workflow efficiency, we've got, we've got IT in three different buildings right now. A resilience among several other issues and resilience, we're talking about disaster resilience. They're not on par with sustainability principles. Our future needs or our, our business continuity planning, you know, think Cascadia. City Hall is going to, you know, we can't go back in once Cascadia hits. These shortcomings are spelled out pretty clearly in several consulting Uh these shortcomings are spelled out pretty clearly in several consulting in uh reports since nineteen since, I'm sorry, since twenty twenty-two. But in helping to chart a path forward, the task force was explicitly charged to raise awareness and gather feedback about community values and goals and outcomes that an improved city campus might be able to provide. The, the task force was not looking for an up or down vote nor explaining the uh funding or determining solutions. We as engagement, fully engaged. Uh they ended, uh they said, okay, you wanna stop?
Thank you, Jen. And now the same question on the civic campus to you, Beckett.
Yeah, so I am in support of the civic campus development. I have heard from many members of city staff that the that the working conditions within our current facilities are just in some cases entirely inefficient, in others, a, they're not livable, more workable. However, I believe that the existing city hall building is a core piece of Corvallis history and an essential symbol of our local government and to demolish it and replace it with a new building would be detrimental to our city in a variety of ways. I believe it should be internally remodeled and, if possible, expanded to accommodate staff needs rather than entirely demolished. I also believe that the civic campus developments should be planned, funded and considered, and considered separately, individually from each other due to their varied individual needs, rather than as an entire package developing the uh, the city staff buildings separately from the police station and separately from other facilities, just due to the variation of needs, the variation in available land and the variations in how in, for both financial and ecological costs of building such new facilities.
Thank you, candidates. Now I'll turn back to Greg. And mute.
Thank you. So for our next question, we ask, are reported incidents of racial bias and hate crimes adequately documented and addressed in our city? Would you alter or augment the process that's currently in place? Beckett, uh your responsibility.
So I believe that incidents of racial bias are not adequately documented and addressed, which in part is due to what I have observed as a a general lack of faith in our local government and a lack of our constituents feeling like their concerns will be addressed and heard, much less incidents of racial violence, hate crimes and bias. I think in terms of practical solutions, our city comment card should be widely distributed at every office and the the, I don't know if you've seen the, the QR code that directs to the city comment form should be posted citywide to make these reporting avenues available to all. Um in terms of other specific actions, I believe that the Community Police Review Advisory Board should meet more regularly than they currently do and focus on prioritizing the racial bias that is so commonly present in traffic stops and other police actions that unduly impact people of color in our community above others. And I believe that Corvallis should be a place of safety, equity and acceptance for all. And while we currently do an incredible amount to make it that way, there are lots of avenues for improvement and steps that we can take in the future to make our city more diverse, safer and more accepting for all.
Thank you, Beckett. Jen, you're next.
Okay, are reported incidents of racial bias adequately documented and addressed in our city? Okay. Probably not, uh since uh we have statewide trends and a report that just came out July showing uh in, incidents, bias incidents increased two hundred and twenty-nine percent throughout Oregon uh for the last twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Curiously though, Benton County actually showed a drop, a seventy-five percent drop between two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-three. Everyone else, all other county, well, all other but the rural counties showed an increase. Our neighboring counties showed an increase from fifty-three percent um to hundred, uh five hundred and forty percent, and that's Lane County. Um so is Benton County data real? Uh if it is, the community is doing something right, but if we don't have assurances that the data that these numbers are correct, that, that the, the statewide what is, I think it was the Department of Criminal Justice Commission report. Uh if we don't have assurances that these numbers are correct, we need to check. We need to check if bias incidents are actually being reported. Are they documented? Are they processed by the proper authorities? Or is there some, something happening that it's, it's, people are missing the boat here. There could be any number of reasons. So we need to fix, find out why it's so low and then fix that, whatever. If, 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 unless we really don't, don't have that many. I think, uh you know, Albany went up a hundred and something percent or Lynn County. So um I understand still, going, going forward here, I understand victims of bias crimes and incidents may be reluctant to report them. It's good that there's a hotline. It's staffed by trauma, um informed operators, but retelling, read reliving, if you will, an incident is not easy. It's easier for some to compartmentalize their feelings. Uh perhaps they blame themselves or brush it off. Um so we need to also educate everyone, what is a, what is a biased incident, what is a biased crime. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh thank you both candidates. Um that concludes um our seven questions, but now we want to move on to your closing statements. So uh please tell the voters who are listening why they should vote for you in the upcoming election. And we ask that you limit your response to a minute and a half. We're going to start with Jan and then we'll end with Beckett. So Jan, uh your closing statement.
Okay, well, why you should vote for me? Okay, well, my, my policy priorities um include public safety, community resilience and wellbeing for all residents. That's a big umbrella. We, we gotta make sure that city operations operate. Fire, EMT, police, community development, housing, availability of jobs that pay a living wage. How do we do that? Economic vitality is how we do that. So I wanted to, just on a personal note, I like doing this, these personal notes thing here. Uh this morning, the GT described me as being outspoken, fact-driven and detail-oriented. And I think they might have mentioned I was opinionated, but I kind of glossed over that if they did say that. What I'd like to say about that is we all need to realize that the council represents all of Corvallis and the multitude of political views and personal circumstances therein that shape each individual's lives. A council should be as diverse as its community. It should not favor one political stance over another. It is a collaborative body that deliberates to arrive at consensus. My ward has almost five thousand registered voters. Fifty-two percent are either non-affiliated, Republican, independent or something else. That says to me that the council should be balanced and broadly inclusive of all views. As a scientist, and I still am, I don't work at it though, but I have been diligent throughout my career and life about keeping an open mind and receptive of new and different concepts. For without that ethos, creation of knowledge and progress does not occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Beckett, your closing statement.
Uh I'd like to start by thanking Jessica, Greg and Jan for your time and thanking the NAACP and League of Women Voters for hosting this and allowing me to speak to and reach my constituents. I believe that people should cast their votes for me because I represent several underrepresented groups within our community and can provide a blueprint for said groups to realize that they can in fact have a voice and an impact within our community and to represent all of Corvallis equally, equitably and with grace. Thank you.
Thank you, Beckett. Jessica?
Thank you, Ward One candidates, Jan Napack and Beckett Hunt for joining in a lively discussion and for sharing your interest in a seat on the Corvallis City Council. To all watching, on behalf of the Lynn Benton NAACP and the League of Women Voters of Corvallis, thank you so much for listening in. And of course, remember to talk to your friends, your neighbors, your family about their voting plans. Get out, vote early and we'll see you at the general election in November. Thank you all so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.